And I will just read this for the audience. And our vast listening audience on YouTube, I'm sure. American Red Cross Month 2025. Whereas this March 2025, we celebrate American Red Cross Month by recognizing the compassionate acts of people in the town of Carbondale and by renewing our commitment to lend a helping hand to our neighbors in need. Whereas since Clara Barton founded the American Red Cross more than 140 years ago, generation after generation has stepped up to deliver relief and care across our country and around the world, bringing out the best of humanity in times of crisis. Advancing this noble mission, the volunteers and supporters who now give back through the Western Colorado chapter remain unwavering in their commitment to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of today's emergencies. Whereas their voluntary and generous contributions shine a beacon of hope in people's darkest hours, whether it's delivering shelter, food, and comfort during disasters, supporting service members, veterans, and their families, or saving lives with first aid, CPR, AED, and other skills. Whereas this work to uplift our community is truly made possible by those who selflessly answer the call to help whenever and wherever it's needed. We hereby recognize this month of March in honor of their remarkable service and ask everyone to join in their commitment to care for one another. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Pro Tem Erica Sparhawk of the town of Carbondale, by virtue of the authority vested in me by the laws of the town of Carbondale and Colorado, do hereby proclaim March 2025 as Red Cross Month. I encourage all citizens of Carbondale to reach out and support its humanitarian mission. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the town of Carbondale this 25th day of March 25th. There's the seal.
Thanks, everyone, for letting us come here tonight. This is Tammy Irwin, a friend and supporter of the Red Cross, and I'm Jackie Witsett, and I am a volunteer for the last five years with the Red Cross, and we just wanted to read a few words into the record.
Okay, thank you for the recognition. It's interesting, in 1943, President Franklin D. Roosevelt did acknowledge that Red Cross Month would happen in March, and so I appreciate you recognizing it. I think more importantly, we want to just take a minute and honor and recognize thousands of hours of volunteers that participate here in the Roaring Fork community to support their neighbors in need. And I'd give you a couple of specifics. We had 11 fires last year where people responded and were helpful, 13 families that were impacted. We then had 71 fire alarms that were installed to try to prevent those fires, and a number of families, 43 families, who now have a much safer community to live in. And it really is the Red Cross who takes the spirit of action to really change the outcome. And so thank you for recognizing the many people who contribute to that. We all hope that we can be contributors and not in need of, but it's terrific when we can really play a role in community and make sure our community is a safer, better place to be. Thank you.
Thank you again. And thank you, Patrick, for the back office work you've done for us.
Yeah, thanks for bringing this to us. Really appreciate it.
Trustees want to do a picture with the attendees? I think they...
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, please, thank you.
I hate to interrupt the special business.
I was like, I'll come on down.
Should we go with your button?
Please don't trip.
On what?
Yeah, right, exactly. Try not to get that in the picture, okay, Pat?
Oh, he's official.
Are we getting some lighting light?
We got just a little background.
That's the wrong one.
There we go.
It's an art.
I think it'd be a good picture.
Let everybody's eyes roll in.
All right, we have one more proclamation. I guess I'll do the same thing. I'll read it first, and then if anybody has any comments they want to make. Okay. This one is the National Donate Life Month Proclamation 2025. Whereas April 2025 is the 22nd Annual National Donate Life Month, a time to raise awareness for organ, eye, and tissue donation, encourage Americans to register as donors, and honor those that have saved lives and healed lives through the gift of donation. And whereas 95% of Americans support organ donation, but only 48% register, yet one donor can save up to eight lives through organ donation, save and heal more than 75 lives through tissue donation, and help restore sight in up to two people through cornea transplants. And whereas Colorado has led the nation with more than 2/3 of Coloradans selflessly registering to be organ, eye, and tissue donors at the DMV. And whereas in Colorado in 2024, a record 311 heroic organ donors provided 947 life-saving transplants, and 1,860 heroic tissue donors saved and healed nearly 144,000 individuals through tissue grafts. And whereas registering gives hope to the 1,300-plus people waiting for life-saving organ transplant in Colorado, while compassionately celebrating donors and their families for giving the gift of life. And whereas organ, eye, and tissue donation is only possible with our communities and partners coming together for one united purpose, saying yes to an organ, eye, and tissue donor is not just checking a box, it is saving and healing lives. Now, therefore, I, Erica Sparhawk, the Mayor Pro Tem of the town of Carbondale in the state of Colorado, do hereby recognize the month of April 2025 as National Donate Life Month. There's a lot of numbers in that one. Is there anybody here regarding this one that wanted to speak? Okay. Or wants a photo?
That came from Jessie Rochelle. I think she's traveling.
Okay, awesome. All right, with that, can we do roll call?
Here.
Here.
Laird?
Here.
Monta Major is absent. Robeson is absent. Mayor Pro Tem?
Here.
We have a call.
All right, the first item is the consent agenda. There's an approval of minutes from our meetings in March, and we're still in March, so thank you, Patrick. There's a number of license renewals and special event permit approvals, and then accounts payable, a RAFTA bike share MOU, and a IMTPR IGA. Is there anything that anybody want to pull off the consent agenda, or is there a motion to approve?
Just that I should recuse myself from the lip sync battle special event permit.
There's only four of us here.
You can.
Well, I mean, we can note your conflict and acknowledge it and say that it really isn't an issue in this case and move forward. He works for kidding kid.
He's an employee.
And it's a special event permit.
Is that a problem?
Does the employer seeking approval, yes, but I don't have extraordinary concern in giving them easier on the live body?
I can go on the record saying that we've got no issues with it.
Okay, should we make that part of our motion to approve the consent agenda? Or just make it a recusal discussion? Or does it matter? Right.
You can remove this item.
No, let's do it. But do we need just to acknowledge this as a conflict? But we acknowledge it. Okay.
Does somebody want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion by Colin and a second by Ross. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Sorry about that.
And now it is public comment. Is there anybody here who would like to make a public comment? All right, come on up. And if you can introduce, I know we know you, introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, I understand. Matthew Warwick, I live at 734 Sopris Avenue. I want to just take a minute to comment about the acceleration lane that is planned and to come out of the marketplace exit. You know, I'm not sure when it was, it was a while ago, when this was first proposed and I thought approved, the design was, an acceleration would come out, it would merge with a southbound lane into a single lane, which is now there before merged into the roundabout, before you had to separate and move into the roundabout. Now I understand there's been a design change, and the acceleration lane will come out and go extend all the way into the roundabout. So there's no merging, which I kind of think slows cars down. And I'm sure there's pros and cons on this design, and I'm sure you can find experts to argue pros and cons to this, like, is it a good idea, is it a bad idea? Seems to me like a bad idea. It seems to me that you're encouraging cars to go faster into the roundabout. And also, it seems to me, causing this merging and unmerging, or this merging to choose your lane might be a problem for tractors as well. And I'm not here to argue one design or another, there's people better qualified for that. I'm just here to ask you guys about the process, because I don't, it seems to me that, I'm not sure how the decision was made, it seems to me that sort of CDOT made the decision and told you guys. Now, if I'm wrong about that, and you guys are all comfortable with how this decision was made, great. But, you know, we know CDOT's motivation is to move traffic through town, and there's got to be a pushback and a balance applied to that from our elected officials and our town staff. And I just didn't get the sense that was done here. And, you know, if it wasn't, I would ask you guys to sort of reassess the design of this. And do it in the context that, you know, this is a section of town that has sort of been designed as new urbanism or whatever, right, where high density, people can live without cars, a lot of walkers, a lot of bikers, a lot of people using public transit, and we should be doing everything we can everywhere, but especially in this location, to make it as comfortable for the community and bikes and pedestrians as possible. And also in the context, we know that from the work H Friendly Carbon did on their survey, that this is a roundabout that a lot of people in town are very uncomfortable with. I think it was the number one spot in their survey of sort of anxiety or concern about safety. So, you know, at the very least, if the construction, as the construction get done, maybe there's an opportunity to ask CDOT to do some things that would slow cars down, improve the comfort of the roundabout. So that's it. Check and see whether it's possible to reconsider that design, or do some additional things while you're out there working to make it a little more comfortable and safer for everybody. Thank you.
Is there anyone else? Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead.
My name's Andy Zach. I'm also on the Bike Ped Commission. I'll be quick, because mostly I agree with what Matt said. The two things I wanted to add are, one, we only meet once a month, we didn't get a chance to discuss this as a commission, so I'm just kind of here to say, at least in my informal conversations with a lot of people on the commission, I think that's generally the feeling of the commission as a whole. Secondly, I think there's always an excuse to widen the highway. We know that 133 is a problem. We know that the town has agreed in map that we want to make it more friendly for pedestrians and bicyclists, and I think widening the highway is just antithetical to that goal in almost every situation. That's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you so much. We'll have this gentleman and then, yeah, the woman in the front.
Hi, I'm Dave Johnson. I started a crystal fly shop here in town almost 20 years ago. Spring is here early, and fishing season is ramping up, so to speak, which brings me, of course, to the Carbondale Boat Ramp. I've been hearing quite a few complaints lately from the public again about the recurring homeless camps and trash problem at the boat ramp. I'm sure you all remember me addressing this body a couple of years ago, or a couple of times a year ago, and asking you to have the migrants clean up the mess that they had made. They never did, and the town never cleaned it up either. Since then, numerous volunteers have pitched in to clean up, also aided by the endless efforts of CPW officers and users to try to be good stewards of our resource. These efforts have proven futile as homeless camps under the bridge continue to be enabled by the town of Carbondale. Squatters have come and gone, and more come again, and whoever the latest group is, they always leave more trash and show no respect for our public property or its users. The graffiti on the bridge is a complete disgrace. A couple of elderly men were assaulted at the ramp by squatters when taking out their boat last autumn. I visited the area on Saturday and photographed four tents under the bridge, along with a barbecue grill. Trash was scattered everywhere from their tents down to the water's edge, and trash items included spray paint cans, soiled underwear, the usual alcohol containers, and a large sofa rolled down the embankment. I had a productive call with a Garfield County deputy yesterday who clarified that the jurisdiction under the bridge belongs to Garfield County, the jurisdiction on the ramp is town of Carbondale, and the jurisdiction of CPW is valid anywhere in the state. The deputy told me that the Garfield Service Department is eager to work in partnership with the town of Carbondale to eliminate camps and pollution. He then told me he would go there yesterday and evict any squatters he found. I don't think I'm overstepping my bounds by stating that the fishing and whitewater communities want to see an end once and for all to the camps and the pollution and vehicles getting broken into, and we want everyone to feel safe when using this resource. I don't think we're overstepping our bounds by holding elected officials to a very high standard when it comes to preserving public riverfront properties and rivers that are not only our livelihoods, but are also something that most of us consider to be sacred. The Carbondale Ramp is one of the busiest in the state and perhaps the biggest attraction that our town has. Commercial whitewater and fishing companies will have our CPW fees increased to 7% of our revenues on every commercial trip done on this property this year. We shouldn't have to donate more of our time cleaning up after squatters. CPW officers shouldn't have to clean up trash during every visit just to have more trash there the next time they show up. Volunteers shouldn't have to clean up after others who don't share their idealism, because the trash shouldn't be there in the first place, because there should be a complete end to the enabling of people who have no respect for our home or way of life. That property has been a homeless problem for a very long time, which in my opinion has been a problem of failed leadership. In a democracy, the citizens do not serve the government, it's the government who serves the citizens. Elected officials need to help, not hinder unelected officials, namely, law enforcement officers from all jurisdictions, whether that government is a town government or the governor's office. Elected officials need to listen to the concerns of the citizens who have not only paid for the existence of these properties, but who also pay your salaries, and I hope the governor is listening too. Our citizens want to feel safe in public places like this, in our parks, on our bike paths, on our streets, in our parking lots. Our elected officials here and in Denver need to do a better job of listening to and protecting our law-abiding citizens and taxpayers instead of enabling and protecting those who break the laws of our land. The town of Carbondale has the power to end this problem once and for all. Other enforcement agencies are willing to do their fair share, and our citizens and natural resources deserve better. There will be many, many eyes on this situation over the coming months, and not just commercial permit holders from the Roaring Fork and Vail Valleys. There are also our clients and countless personal users who are from around the state, around the country, as well as from around the world. We can show them all something better than what there is there now. And so I would respectfully ask from the members of this town council, since I'm sure that you all ran for office because you want to make a difference, that you personally helped cleaning up the property, which will hopefully be the last time we need to do this. I feel you share in the responsibility for this situation, and you need to see the problem firsthand, and you need to put in some time and help volunteer like so many others have. And I will personally join you, as will other members of the fishing community, I'm sure, as our season kicks in. So please line up a time some evening or Saturday in the very near future, when you can all personally go down to pick up trash. I'll leave my card with the mayor, give me a call, and we'll set it up. And I'll leave a box of trash bags with the town manager for safekeeping. Here's a chance to really make a difference. I'm looking forward to all of us taking care of this problem once and for all together. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
See you there. Give me a call, I'll be there.
Okay. All right, next, come on up.
My name is Denise Moss. I live at 1333 Rock Court, Carbondale, on the corner of Hendrick and Rock Court. I do not have a prepared statement. I am just here because I am so, so tired of complaining about the speeding on Hendrick Drive. I've lived in this house for 23 years, 24 years, and I've been complaining for 24 years, as have my neighbors. Hendrick Drive is a very wide street. I understand that there have been committees looking at it. I understand that we have tracked numbers of cars and speeds of cars. I watch the digital thing that the police put up. I watch people fly through that at 27, 30, 32 miles an hour, one after another, every day. I've seen kids on bikes almost get hit, I've seen seniors almost get hit, I've seen people with walking dogs almost get hit, including me, because I'm crossing the street and they're barreling down. I have literally witnessed people drag racing on that street. I think that there are some simple solutions that can help mitigate it, they're not going to cure it, but one little step at a time. Bike lanes, especially because summer's coming, and that's a main thoroughfare for people on their bikes, to hit both the Roaring Fork and the Crystal Trails. I think you could do what they do in Hendrick Ranch, which is they have cones with signs that say 20 miles an hour down the middle of the street. It's something that catches their eye that may slow them down. They hit my curve right before senior housing, and they gun it. It's incredible. And I know you're aware, and I know that Kevin's aware, because we've talked about it a lot, and he's really wanted to help mitigate it. We've thrown out tons of ideas. I just want to know why it's so hard to take action, why it is so, so hard to do simple things to slow traffic down on Hendrick Drive. I know that there's traffic problems all over town. I think we've done, you know, I think we're working really hard on pedestrian ways and bike ways and all of those things, but I live in a neighborhood where there are kids and elderly people everywhere, everywhere, and dogs everywhere. And I really think, I'm asking, I'm asking that you guys take action.
That's it. Thanks. All right, thanks, Denise. On the merging lane, we'll follow up with you. I don't recall all the decisions off the top of my head, but I've made a note, and we'll make sure to follow up, especially with the Bike Ped Trails Commission. And we'll follow up with, I'll follow up with Dave Johnson on cleaning up, and maybe we can kind of get an update on, from the, oh, okay. Oh, everybody's pointing at you. But maybe, yeah, it is something where we get an update from our police on just what we do down there, and what the situation is, and stuff like that, unless there's anything else the board wants us to follow up on that specifically.
Well, if you wouldn't mind, Lauren, to, we've had conversations about CPW and their jurisdiction and fencing and our inability to do anything there. So if you could include that in an update of where, what potentially we could do.
Absolutely. Great.
I just, just along those lines, or along that, within that conversation, I want to make sure that we're not conflating or sort of combining homelessness and migrants together. That was sort of the only group that was, could have called out initially, and then homelessness was mentioned later. So I mean, I think there are people of all stripes and colors hanging, or, you know, in that zone, and I think it's a bigger issue than just immigration.
I would agree. And then Denise, I think we'll follow up. I mean, I agree, I live in the same neighborhood, and I know we have it in our mobility access plan, actually, of even doing some pilot works along, pilot projects along Hendrick's to kind of do traffic calming measures. And you're right, it's top of Kevin's mind as well. All right. Thank you, everybody, for, oh, is there any more public comment? Yeah, okay, got one more. That's why Kevin was pointing at you.
That's why we were pointing.
Got it.
I want to thank you for the opportunity to address the town council, and as I did two weeks ago, I want to compliment the trustees and the building department at upgrading the codes of the town to 2021 standards. I want to bring to your attention two issues. One is building height, which is addressed in the Universal Development, UDC, I think that's Universal Development Code. And it is, it's well documented how you determine building height. And historically, the way that's been done, having spoken to the prior administration, members of the prior administration, you take the unimproved slope of a building envelope, you have a building pad, and you measure 27 feet up at one point, and then five feet to the hip of the roof, and that determines your building height. A couple of years ago, there was a property approved on Perry Ridge in RVR that, where there's significant slope, and that slope is on alluvial fan, or what OSHA calls type C soils. Those soils are very unstable, but what has been approved is a house that progressively goes up the slope, not clear that the foundation hits bedrock as suggested by a soils engineering study that is part of the approval. That soils engineering study was done in 2017 for a much more modest structure, not one that sloped up, that was built up the slope. And the current building department decided to require information, which I think is totally appropriate, but then approved everywhere where there's a roof on an elevation contour line, stepping up the slope, they measured 27 feet at multiple different contour lines. So the height of this building is out of all proportion to other houses in the neighborhood. And it is a radical departure from mountain ranch-style homes, which I'm addressing with the RVR Design Review Committee and HOA. That's a separate topic. So I would request that as part of the building codes revision, that we go back to the historical way of determining building height, which you will be addressing in two weeks. Unfortunately, I can't be here, but I'll try to plug in, you know, remotely. And that criteria, you can drive through RVR, and it has been used extensively since the inception of RVR. You can see the implementation of that mechanism to determine building height. So now we've got this anomalous structure. The second is that, given the soil type C that exists, that same structure at 769 Perry Ridge has not done excavation to OSHA standards. It is a risk to employees, and it's also a risk to neighboring lots that have already been, one neighboring lot that has been built on for 15 or 20 years, to create sloughing off of the soil and creating more issues for that property, which is not my property, it's a neighbor's property. And so I would ask that the, so what I'm asking for is, number one, to go back to the building heights as they were administered. number one, to go back to the building heights as they were administered, you know, for, for over thirty years that I can tell. Secondly, the retaining walls should incorporate the OSHA guidelines, both for excavation and for the, the, the specifications for retaining walls. The current structure will, will not comply. It does not comply today with the excavation. And given the, the fact that they offset the, the house to the building, to one side of the building envelope, it, it will not comply to, it will not be compliant with the, the, the retaining wall guidelines that, that are in, in place, both in the town of Carbondale and in RVR. So that, that's the request. I, I ask that you please consider those, those two things as you're evaluating the, the bill. I have attempted to address this with both the planning department, the building official, and I get incomplete answers each and every time I address it. I've now involved the mayor and Jessica Robeson to evaluate that directly. Thank you very much for your time. And, and by the way, this is, I am really impressed with how you guys conduct these meetings. Thank you so much.
And your, your name is Pat Garrett, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, thanks. And thanks for coming again to address this. Any more public comment before I move along? No, okay. All right, now we are on to trustee comments. Anybody have comments?
Start with somebody else, I need to think.
I went to tree board. There's some concerns there and I guess, you know, I think we're finding that this is somewhat a systemic concern in terms of wanting to have looked at a, a plan before it, it went to staff. And I think there's just some, some flow chart things to maybe put on paper somewhere in terms of, in this particular case, looking at the landscaping plan for the pool aquatic center. And some concerns that they hadn't had a chance to look at it or we're only getting, and, and/or we're only giving it on their, their computers versus an actual plan to look at. So that, that was it, sort of an interesting meeting. I, I wanted to respond to some of the folks who left, so I may just respond to them, I guess, eventually, or track them down individually. But I think that's it. I might think of something else at some point. The two, real quickly, the, the two lanes of the roundabout is, is new info to me. If I missed something, I would certainly like to see that. I, I think that's a concern, knowing that I've, I've had some weirdness going in there and trying to go straight and other people thinking that you're not, if you're already in, in one of those lanes. I think it's, it's definitely something that we, we ought to look at. And, and I think I was a no vote specifically because of that, that speed up lane, that entrance lane. And so I would definitely want to see that again if we could. That's, you know, we, since we did vote specifically on a, on a specific plan there, I'd love to see that again.
All right, thanks, Ross. Colin, do you have anything?
Not really, I think we suggested that we can follow up with all, everybody. They've all raised good concerns and I think we can, we can address all of them. Some may be easier than others, but we're not ignoring those issues. We're trying to work on them, so hopefully we can resolve some of their concerns.
All right. Chris, did you have anything?
Just, I went to environmental board meeting. There's still a little bit of sort of a leadership question going on there with Hannah Hunt. Well, maternity leave or resignation and then, and then Quinn moving to, to New Zealand. So I guess just keep your eyes out for people who might want to be part of that or especially in a, a leadership role. I think we have some good prospect maybe with Beth Shoemaker. But she's out of town, but I think she could still be the chair of it.
Great.
But hopefully the open house will also maybe.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. That's a reminder, there's a open house for all the boards and commissions.
It's the date.
What's the date again?
Sixteenth.
April sixteenth, April sixteenth, if anybody's interested in any board or commission.
And Lauren, is it possible as part of the outreach to let people know how many seats are available?
Yes, we will be, we will be doing that.
It sounds like we have a few on multiple.
We absolutely do. And Anna will be back on Monday and she is all over that.
Great. The only one I have is I attended the Parks and Rec Commission meeting. I can't now even remember the date. But it was a full stacked meeting. They've got a great board, really active board, lots of good updates. And, I mean, they were mainly updating on the pool, which were, it's the same kind of update we got actually the day before that, or I can't remember now. And, but they, we also, they had a celebration celebrating Margaret, who's moving to New Zealand and just the integral kind of force that she's been with the Parks and Rec Department and all the amazing programming that she's really been a leader on. So they had a really nice party acknowledging her and I just want to also acknowledge her and all the time and that, and energy that she's put into the programming and all these cool events, even like the puzzle event, which was really big and kind of sold out, I think, and stuff, which I think is a really cool addition to our regular kind of athletic events and stuff. So I think that was, that was really all I have. Any attorneys' comments? Managers' update?
I have a few things. First of all, along the lines of Margaret leaving, I, the entire Park and Rec staff pretty much was on the interview committee for the candidates who applied for that position. I know that there are several very promising candidates and I believe that they will be making a decision within the next week. So that's good news. Also, along the, the Park and Rec, the signage in Riverfront Park has been installed. There's one issue with one of the signs that they're trying to get replaced. They really needed to do that before the closure. And when the park opens up again, and it's a little nicer, although I don't know about, we could have done it today, it's so nice out. We will be having sort of just an open house at Riverfront Park to welcome people and have some people acting as docents to talk about the signage. So it's really beautiful and they did an amazing job. So that's my Park and Rec report. Again, the board and commission open house. I don't know if there's anything you want to add to that, Patrick, but we are hoping that, you know, last year we had it, it was very sparsely attended. We're hoping that we'll get more people this year and that we'll be able to fill some of these positions. I know that the E-Board is really struggling and they may have a month or so where they can't have a meeting, but so be it. The Colorado Municipal League Conference is in Breckenridge this year. I know we talked about it briefly. I didn't notice that the schedule is up. And, you know, those hotel rooms, they sell out pretty fast for that period of time. It's June twenty-fourth through twenty-seventh. If anyone is anxious to go, please get in touch with Patrick so we can get you registered and make sure that you have lodging, et cetera. The building code adoption, Aaron is working diligently on that. The goal is to have what's going to go in the packet to the board a couple of days before the packet comes out, just so that you could have a little more time to look at it. So we're aiming for Monday at the latest Tuesday and then it will be in the packet publicly on Thursday. And talked to staff about the Board of Trustees tour of town facilities that we didn't manage to get done last summer. We are currently looking, and I'd like for, you don't have to tell me right the second, but let me know if the morning of April twenty-fifth does not work for you. It works for staff. That's not the only date that might work for staff, but we figured we would throw that out. It's a Friday morning. And that town facilities tour will include at least drive-bys of some of our employee housing, potentially a tour of one of the properties that is currently vacant. Pretty much the whole water, water treatment infrastructure, selected parks and public worms. If there is anything else specific that someone wants to make sure that we include, please let me know, because we can, we can certainly be flexible on what we do. I sort of penciled it in for eight to twelve, but I just don't know what your availability is, so please let me know. And I think that is what I have. I will be out of town starting mid-morning tomorrow for a week. You all know how to reach me, no matter whether I'm here or not. So feel, you know, feel free, don't hesitate to contact me either by email or my cell phone. I'm certainly happy to, I'll be talking to Aaron about the building codes and, you know, I'll, I'll still be doing some work. So, from Hawaii.
Nice.
In the sun, with my mind. Thank you.
I'm just curious, what's, what's going on over here in the parking lot across the way? Do you know? Maybe Kevin knows.
I, that is probably pool related.
Okay.
They were storing.
Stones on the pile of rock?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's some equipment over there right now, but they were storing the soil and sifting and what have you, so. The pool.
One quick, but is the river park open or is that still closed right now?
Um, I believe it's open for foot traffic. It just couldn't, we couldn't be do, having equipment in there doing work.
Construction.
Got you.
Yeah.
Okay.
I would just say one thing. I just think that is another proof of, to some degree, the value of having like a dirty parking lot in the town that we can do random things to and not be ruffling too many feathers. So I just think, I know we always want to improve everything, but I think there is some value sometimes to having the back doors to things and parking lots and unimproved areas that we can deploy for stuff like that, so.
I was thinking the same thing. All right, thank you, Lauren.
Thank you.
All right, our first action item is Second Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project bid award. Kevin, you're on.
I never know how this thing's going to work.
It's green, is it your light green?
Yeah.
Green, go.
Ticking back real quick to Park and Rec, just pointing out that our park supervisor, Russell's, last day will be April first. So he's been with the town for fifteen years. My understanding is that public information, his replacement?
There's no reason for it not to.
Okay. I, I think you all have probably seen Jesus around. He is going to take over that position, so I think that's great for him.
That's great, no, thank you for that. That was also brought up at the Parks and Rec Commission and I forgot to mention that.
No problem.
I know, exactly. Yeah, way to get Jesus trained up.
So the real reason I'm here is, as Erica mentioned, the consideration of awarding contract for the Second Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Scott did a pretty good job of kind of the background of why, why were we here? Why are we doing this? And also a good rundown of the process that we went through. Even though we only got one bid, we did have a lot of contractors attend the pre-bid meeting. I would suspect that the one bid scenario is because of the timing of the project. We want to do this when school is not in session because Second Street is a very major thoroughfare to the school. The other thing in here is it's mentioned that it's about forty-nine percent over what we included in the budget for twenty twenty-five. That being said, Scott did mention that there has been some additions to that since we came up with that budgeted number in large part, the actual replacement and addition of manholes in that section. We intentionally do not provide specific bid information in these on the chance, if it's not approved and we have to go back out to bid, we do not want to give other bidders the opportunity to see what somebody else bid on it. But I can tell you that that, the addition of those manholes was probably around a quarter of a million dollars of the increase in the cost of this. So, you know, Scott said, we can choose to do nothing, which we would not recommend. There's also the pipe lining alternative. I wouldn't recommend that because of the type of pipe and the shortened lifespan of it. I think if we're going to do it, let's get in there and do it right and do it for the next fifty years.
Could you compare, like, so we replace it, what's the lifespan versus lining what's currently there? What's the lifespan?
Lining typically, you're looking at about a twenty-year lifespan. I would say, I mean, if you're talking to the engineer side of me, you, you would say that PVC pipe has probably got a fifty-year time span. The reality of that is it probably has a lot more than that. And, and the, it, the PVC pipe is solid. The pipe that's out there right now is, lack of a better term, two PVC pipes with a little bit of grout in between them that provide the structure, so, but they're really thin walled. So, you know, lining would be less disruptive right now, but over time.
Wouldn't get us that much. Yeah, okay, great, thank you.
Anyway, the, the bid was one million, one hundred ninety-two thousand, three hundred twenty-five dollars. We are comfortable that the funding in the wastewater fund can handle that. We are also, we will also see if there's not some things we can do to bring that cost down a little bit, whether it's by doing a little bit of the pre-work ourselves or, or whatnot. But, yeah, if, if there's no questions, which happy to take us to have that, there is a motion provided recommending that we award this contract.
So if you are able to do pre-work and stuff, this is a contract that can be amended and reduced essentially? Or like, how do we make the savings if we're going to sign a contract ahead now with them?
So the way our construction contracts work is they're unit price contracts. So what the contract locks in is if they do the work, that's how much we pay them for whatever. You know, there's a lot of quantities that are estimated in there for road base, asphalt, things of that nature that can change. So what we're doing is basically locking in the price. So if we use more or less of that, that's still the price.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Just curious, I'm, I'm assuming the answer is probably no. But is there any element of our tactical urbanism that might play out alongside having? Is this, this, this occurs in the middle of the, where, where exactly does this happen? I mean, are we creating any sort of situation where we basically create a bike lane opportunity or create a narrowed street? Or can at least sort of observe what happens? And, you know, this is, this is one of the, I don't think this is a place that's, or I don't think Second Street is, is tapped for this, anything this summer, but it's a concern that people fly through that, that area and it's been noted. Is there any sort of opportunity to, to do anything in a, while you're at it situation or not really?
Not in this particular case.
Okay.
What you see of Second Street won't necessarily be changing, but that doesn't mean that we couldn't look down the road if we try some of the tactical urbanism on some of these other projects that we couldn't apply it there. But what's going to slow down traffic this year is that half the road's going to be missing.
Yeah, okay.
We should do that on Hendrick's Drive. Let's just, let's replace the sewer line.
But it is down the middle of the street, basically.
No, the sewer is actually on the. No, the sewer is actually on the east side of Second Street.
As in, yeah.
Kind of right up against the sidewalk or.
Because that does seem like you could conceivably patch with like a red asphalt or something and get yourself a, a bike lane out of it essentially. If you're at, doing it already.
And, and it, I mean, honestly, adding a bike lane to that area would be a matter of us going out and striping one when we're done. That's, that, it's not that that couldn't be done. I, and don't make red asphalt. Very, very expensive.
Yeah, ju- just if we can keep an eye on it, any, anything we can kind of glean from, from what we're presented with, which is a narrowing of the roadway, I think will be interesting to, to see. And so maybe keep it a little longer as needed, you know, have, have plenty of berth for, and safety options and see what happens. That's all.
Yeah. And like I said, I think there's opportunities. The entire west side of the road will be repaved from snow mass down to capital. So if that's something, you know, discussing it with the Bike Ped Commission, if that's something that they're interested in, if it's something that the board's interested in, i- it's just a matter of thinking of the, we've had these discussions before, the trade off between, you know, how you can accomplish a bike lane? Does it impact parking along there? Does it not impact parking? But it would be very easy to do regardless of doing this project.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'd move to approve and authorize the mayor to, to execute the attached agreement with uh, Esc- Escavation Services Inc. for the construction of the Second Street Sanitary Sewer Replacement Project. Do I have to say, Prutin? Mayor Prutin? Do you sign it?
Oh, uh, no, I think it's fine.
Okay.
Is there a second? All right. I've got a motion, um, from Colin and a second by Ross. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you guys.
Thanks, Kevin. All right. Next, I gotta get back to my agenda. All right. Eric, you're here to join us for the Carbondale Integrated Weed Management Plan for twenty twenty-five.
Hello.
Thanks for being here tonight.
You bet. Thank you. Um, so I, I, I included a kind of a very lengthy memo in your packet, but it is, uh, it is kind of a, a product of a lot of work that we've been doing over the course of many years. And so just want to share that with some of the new, new, uh, board members is how we got here too, you know? So that's all kind of detailed in, in that. So, so you have that history of how we, we've gotten to where we are right now. So I don't think I need to cover any of that, I hope. And, uh, so what, what we're looking at for, for this year is really, um, not changing many of our techniques, you know, still, uh, still looking at an integrated weed management plan that utilizes, you know, as many tools in our toolbox as possible with, uh, you know, chemical use being the last thing we would ever try. And so we're, we're still really, our philosophy and, and we'll, we'll maintain this philosophy as long as I'm here. That, uh, yeah, we're, we're trying to figure out how to do this with the thought of soil health, right? That's the whole, um, Integrated Weed Management Plan's goal is to build better soil health, more resilient soil for our natives to actually thrive. And that's actually, when the natives thrive, that helps really block out the, uh, noxious weed infestation and their opportunity to, to take over some of our properties. Um, and, and they like to do that. Um, they, they're amazingly resilient. And one of our, uh, projects that, you know, was really kind of a great experiment in this was our Riverfront Park, uh, parcel. So we had noxious weed problems down there. We saw that there was some dilapidated upland, you know, um, areas of that park. So the whole Riverfront Park designed, um, you know, landscape plan really is, is gonna be a great, uh, look at when you do that, when you design a landscape plan, you plant natives, you irrigate, you fence off, you know, and you do manual extraction of the weeds that are gonna come up. You disturb the earth, you irrigated it, you fenced it, you're gonna have a weed problem. Um, that's just, that's just Colorado. Um, so we, we knew that was coming and we, uh, we put some good, good effort down there, um, to, to really try to see what was there, identify what was there. Um, so we're not manually extracting what we put in the ground. Um, because we put a big effort down there to put a lot of natives back in the ground. And, uh, and so we are, you know, we won't know the success of that for a couple of years. So it's, it's a patience game. Our Integrated Weed Management Plan is, is about patience. And, and really starting, really looking, I've been in it long enough to see the benefits of, of the plan and all the, see the benefits of all the different techniques we use too. One of our, you know, largest techniques is manual extraction and, and we've really, we had to up our budgets, um, because of that. We, our parks crew, when we get into the middle of the growing season, they're running and gunning and mowing and, and maintaining our parks and cleaning our parks. They don't, they can't necessarily be just pulled out because we have a noxious weed problem in a, in another property. So what we're, what we're doing there, how we're being successful at that, because you don't know when that timing happens every year, right? Um, it can be very different in different park spaces every year. So we, we, uh, get Chris and, and, uh, some of our other staff, um, able to utilize and supervise, uh, temp staff. And, and we, and we, we've been pretty lucky at getting temp staff that's hardworking temp staff that, that, uh, knowledgeable temp staff that we don't have to train too much to, um, and it's, and it's pretty easy. See this weed? This is the one we're going after today. Eradicate it. And, uh, and, you know, make sure you get it deep enough. Um, or we're going after seed heads if we're at that time of the year where, where we just don't want those seeds to drop and propagate themselves. We'll, uh, we'll get them, we'll do a big effort just to cut, cut seed heads. We've seen the benefits of, of these, uh, efforts in, in many of our park, park spaces. What, uh, the, the, um, Integrated Weed Management Plan kind of goes through a process to, to get to this point where you guys are looking at it tonight. It's been through the Parks and Rec Commission. It went to the E-Board. It's had some eyes on it. Um, we've been to some training sessions. Um, there's, there is a, a Valleywide Weed Meeting that we went to on February sixth, where we talked about all this stuff, how these other people are doing it with their integrated weed management plans. And so we're, we're just, we're still, there's so much to learn here and we're still learning. And that's why it's, it's pretty exciting to see how it, how it has been working in some of our parklands, you know? Where we've seen a diminished, uh, you know, infestation. We've seen a, uh, you know, and I learned a little bit about, you, you're never gonna eradicate. These, these noxious weeds are opportunistic. They, they, they have a purpose to, to exist. And they are actually, you know, helping that, that soil. It's also, um, it's just, um, they're, you know, you, you can, you can just kind of, uh, control them, really. That's, that's a good way to look at this entire plan is to control the existing weeds on our, on our park spaces. With that said, you know, um, you know, when you go into this with that type of a mentality, it really helps you, look at the long, long range picture, right? In the long range view of, of how to manage all of our parklands. Um, and, and our different ways that we manage our parklands each. So that's why we created, um, kind of a technique, uh, spreadsheet per, per park, um, per type of park. Um, and we started to realize when we first started this process that a lot of our, um, parks are super unique as far as how we would manage them, but also unique in the sense of what the issue was with that park. So we had to have different techniques per each park space. And that's what those spreadsheets that are detailed that are included in your, in your packet. So those are park-specific spreadsheets that really let you know what we've been trying, what, what did work, what didn't work, you know, what, what percentage that we felt like it was successful and efficacy of different types of techniques. So, so that's what's kind of described in, in that. And that, that gives us and our, the people that are looking at the parks every day, you know, our parks foreman and, uh, you know, Chris Gleason, our park maintenance guy, um, gives them a good, a good kind of gauge of what their efforts are, are doing too. So it's, uh, at the end of the growing season, we go back and look at those and figure out what worked, what didn't work, what we might want to change for the next year. So that's all detailed in, in this, in this, uh, memo and in, in those, um, spreadsheets that you're, that you're looking at. A couple of things I just wanted to mention and something that I've kind of, you know, learned through this process, but one of our, one of our most effective, kind of, uh, processes to, uh, to keep noxious weeds from infiltrating our turf parks is the way we manage our turf parks. Um, you know, there's a, there's a big push to look at our, our, you know, turf as almost an evil, you know, water sucking, um, you know, uh, monoculture, you know, type, type zone, but, but our functional turf parks are some of our lowest, um, noxious weed issues. And so a good, a good organically, you know, aerated, fertilized and overseeded turf park is actually one of your best, um, defenses against noxious weed infiltration. So, um, and that took me a long time to kind of wrap my head around. And, and so, you know, so we, we need to, I'm not saying that we don't look at, you know, turf replacement programs in, in the turf that is non-functional. And those are, you know, I, I say that non-functional because they're, they're visually nice, but nobody's playing on them. Nobody's using them for picnic space. Nobody's using them for special events, sports. You know, so, so I think we just need to, we need to dip into that very carefully, um, on our public land. I know we have a, uh, a private pro- program going, which I think is great because then it's maintained by the private people that are, have, have replaced their turf. But one of our, one of our biggest challenges would, would be to take what is right now functional, you know, low growth, low water, um, you know, seeded turf and create a pollinator garden that then becomes a noxious weed problem, um, for maintenance. We had, we had some conversations going with the, um, RFOV at Third Street Center about that. And so those, you know, we wanted to just make sure everybody's on the same page with what, you know, the, the long-term vision of, of, uh, you know, how we would need to maintain that, you know, and who would be responsible. And so, so we, we looked at all that and, and I think it's a great idea. I think that, that, you know, it should happen in the future, but we needed to make sure everybody realized that from the get-go that this was gonna be a, needs some more scrutiny, needs, needs a better plan. Um, shouldn't be just, let's put it on here and then not worry about it, you know, because, because I think, uh, I think there's, I think it's a great plan with RFOV. They're an amazing organization. They would be a sustainable, um, maintenance, you know, crew there, and they would use it as an educational piece for, for their, their, their program. So I think it's, I think that, that should happen in the future. I just wanted to make sure everybody's on the same page of the long-term vision of, and, and of, of the maintenance of it, you know? And that maybe that's an MOU that needs to be created for a long-term vision of something like that. But, so it's not that we don't want that to happen, not that we don't need more pollinator guards, not that we don't need more pollinators. But my job is to look at the long-term maintenance of that. And, and that's when I get nervous when somebody says, oh, well, the volunteers will, well, I've seen that happen too many times here. And, and when they disappear, then it falls back on us. So. So, um, so we are gonna try, the, the real things, some different things we're gonna try this year just to, try to get ahead of it. Are we, you know, a couple of our, you know, challenges have been our baseball infield. So irrigated dirt, right? And bind weed and, and some other weeds that have really established themselves from there, taproots and, and, uh, and we, we did a big, deep dig there with our rodeo tractor to see if we could, you know, you know, pull all that stuff up, get rid of the organic material, put some new dirt down, look great for about a week. Boom, that stuff just went nuts. You know, we actually pissed it off and it went, and it went crazy. So we're, so that's one of our challenges. We're, we're trying to, we're still, you know, thinking about how to, how to manage that and deal with it. We, we just need to, what we're gonna do right now is just drag it a lot, a lot more than, than we have in the past. It's hopefully that just don't get established. Some of our, uh, you know, other techniques, we use the, um, Avenger, which is a burn down herbicide, which takes it off, off the, um, protective layer of the leaf on the plant, and then the sun just burns it down. Doesn't kill the plant, it just diminishes its growth, right? That, that doesn't work on, on those, you know, on the bind weed, it just doesn't. Um, it works in other parks and we still, we're still using it out at the RV Park and many other parks. Um, so we're still using, so we're still using the steam techniques. We are gonna try this year, uh, uh, new fertilizer, just to, it's a fertilizer that we found out about when we went to this weed meeting, this Valleywide Weed Meeting. And they, um, so we're gonna do some test plots in a couple of our, our, our parks. And mostly, um, in, in some of our, uh, you know, our open space parks, you know, that are, that are, um, are passive parks. Um, we're gonna try, try, try that this year and just create some test plots and just see the efficacy of that product. We, uh, yeah, we, you know, otherwise we've looked at the goats. We've, um, looked at the properties where the goats would, would, would be a good potential for us. We still think that there's some value to, to their use. But we, it, it would need somebody to manage it that's not there right now. And so that's, that's been what we really, when we really looked at it, we're like, well, for the goats to work, you have to go, you know, back in and, and oversee, you have to manage it with, with the goat herders of what you want on, to happen on that property. Cause you know, in some of our properties, it's not gonna work because we have desirable plant species there. And they, you put the goats down there, they will, yeah, they like the weeds, they like the other stuff too. So, so we have not, um, we don't have that in this year's plan at all. I, I still think that there's a couple of spots where it'd be super valuable. They're not cheap. It's about twenty-five hundred dollars a day to have the goats, um, on, on some property, about twenty-five hundred dollars an acre is what they can do about acre a day. So it's, it's not cheap. We'd have to budget for it. We'd have to figure out exactly where we want to do that. We're gonna try this, um, fertilizer in some of those areas where we, we thought we could use the goats and just because it's much cheaper. We're gonna see if that kind of helps us out and height oversee in those areas, um, with this new kind of fertilizer. And so we'll, we'll see how that works this year. And then we'll reassess, um, during budget season, you know, whether or not we should by that time know some of the efficacy of this, uh, this new fertilizer in those locations. And we might look at, uh, you know, budgeting for some goats next year, at least for some of our acreage. So. We, uh, you know, we did up our budget because when we need the manual extraction, um, and the timing is different every year. We, we are spending a lot on, on temp labor to do that. What we're not spending money on is chemicals, you know, and the, and, and how those go down and, and all the, and putting our, our, uh, employees in that unsafe environment. So, so, you know, it, to me, it's, uh, it's money well spent. For the, the temp labor and, and we've seen it, it benefit our properties. So. So I think we're gonna continue with, with that technique. Um, it does take, you know, somebody to be on top of it to, to see where, where they're needed though. And so we, we'll, we'll, we'll have them when we see something happening. In this direction on this piece of property, we, we gotta keep our eyes on our back of our heads to look at that piece of property. And so we usually keep them for about two weeks, three weeks, just to, you know, on certain properties while we're assessing the other ones. And we can usually keep them pretty busy. So we can get consistent, um, you know, and employees through that process. And we can usually keep them pretty busy. So we can get consistent, um, you know, and employees through that process that, that are trained. Because we just say, hey, we can use it for a week. And they're pretty happy as a temp labor to have that option. So, um, so that's, that's where we are. You guys are act, act as the, you know, um, as the approver of our weed management plan, um, through, through legislation. So, um, through the State Noxious Weed Act. So, um, any questions, um, on? Oh, I did forget to talk about, uh, V-CAPS. Um, so we are working with V-CAPS and, and Gwen and, you know, because that, that is a part of this, right? I mean, it, uh, we have 39 different irrigation systems on town property. 18 of those properties are, um, are irrigated with ditch water, you know? And so, so let's say we get into a very tough drought situation, right? We need to have a plan put together. So that's what the, the V-CAPS update is gonna be looking at. What do we do with those systems? What do we do with those parks? How do we, how do we plan and get ahead of, of that 2008? Is that 2018 we had that drought? Yeah. So ahead of that kind of knee-jerk reaction and that we had to kind of conduct in 2018, we wanna, we're gonna, you know, utilize what we did that year, cut our irrigation in half and, and raise our mower heights, you know, and all those techniques that we used, uh, uh, in that drought scenario, um, with a little bit more planning, a little bit more detail. Um, so that, that'll be the V-CAPS update. And that'll come to you in front of you guys. We were trying to get it in front of you in conjunction with this, but, um, that didn't work. That'll come before, in April 22nd.
All right.
So any, any questions? Yeah, we, it's, it's a lot in there. Um, I'm just, I'm happy to report, you know, I, I think it's, I think our integrated weed management plan is, is working. We have the eyes on it, you know? I mean, we're, our, our employees are trained in what to look for now. Um, the, the riverfront park, when, it was kind of scary out there when we first went out there. And, and I, I actually, it was like, hold on, where did these, did we bring these in? Did we bring all these noxious weeds into this park with some top dress or something? Nope. We just dug up the soil, irrigated it. They were in there. Yep, they're in there. So, so we're, we're working hard on that one. Um, if you do get a chance, um, go check it out, um, soon because they just got the interpretive signage done and, uh, and, and it looks really, really good right now. The weeds are gonna pop here pretty soon, but.
When does the closure take effect? When's the closure take effect?
Oh, it's December 1st through March 15th.
Okay, so it's.
It's open right now.
Yeah.
It's open to the public, yeah.
There's not a second one we have to do?
There's one for, um, uh, equipment and construction, but not for, but traffic.
Yeah, it's, it's all, they've, they're, uh, they're wrapped up that project's done. So as far as the sign installation, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, Eric. Uh, this was really great. Does anybody have any questions?
No, just thank you. It's a great, um, evolution of this thing over many years and a lot of work.
Yeah, I just think it's something, uh, um, Juan, thanks for the, a really good memo. I thought, I felt like I kind of got my biology credit for the, for the month, maybe. Um, um, and I think even before I got on, before I ran for, for this position, I, I mentioned to Erica that that I always, like, one thing I always appreciated in Carbondale was walking across Soopers Park and how somehow, like, what, whatever magic went into creating a park that's grassy, but doesn't look like a golf course. And there's like the perfect percentage of dandelions so that we can still, you know, have dandelion day and feel good about it, but also don't feel like you're walking across salad. And, and I think that's, like, really is a remarkable feat. And I think, um, where this kind of goes is that I think especially as we start to, uh, expect, um, and I guess demand on some levels, that, uh, less turf of, of residents, we, it, it, it's ma, it's makes it easier to make that demand or suggest that choice when we have great parks to go lie down in to kick a soccer ball around, um, and, and that sort of thing. And I think, you know, just, just like electric cars and public transportation are, are sort of decisions and evolutions, I think, having great spots of grass, uh, to go, uh, appreciate are, are part of that, that process. I would, just sort of tangentially to that, um, the Tree Board did, did look at the landscape plan and have just concerns, I think in general, liked what it looked like, um, for the, for the Aquatic Center. Um, but did have concerns about required, uh, maintenance of that. And Carl's suggestion, looking at it, and I think this may have been just until things got established, but that could be a couple of years, was to, to contract out that. So to whatever extent, some of this discussion also makes its way into the amount of effort and time and money required, um, to keep the pool going as it gets rooted. Um, you know, I think let's, let's just maybe talk about that at some point or keep that, keep that in mind. Um, because what we're, what we're hearing here is that, that it is a challenge and takes a lot of manual effort to keep things, uh, weed and chemical free. Um, but I think it's just a great feather in the cap of the town that we can, um, you know, basically claim very, very, very minimal herbicide pesticide use. And that's spectacular.
I just have one, one last question. Um, I'm just curious what your relationship or, or, um, coordination with the school district is around, you know, because there seems to be, there's a lot of things that people think are parks that are school district land that, you know, kind of bleed into our parks, I think probably too.
Yeah, yeah. And, and, you know, we, we have, um, shared with concerned citizens that come to us saying, you know, how come that park right there has, you know, dandelions in it? And then this one doesn't have a single one, you know? And so we said, well, we operate by an integrated weed management plan. You know, I know that dandelions in the outfield, the Bill Hanks, is not, not a good look, right? It's a baseball diamond, right, in the outfield? So we, we mow those down, but they're there. They're definitely there. Um, you just can't use a yellow ball, you know, so. Um, you know, but that's, but that, that's that quantum shift, right, that, that we're trying to, um, propagate, right? Of, you know, it's a green grass, doesn't have to be a putting green grass. Yeah, it can have clover in it, you know? It can have crabgrass in there, it can have dandelions. It's still a functional green space. Um, and, you know, more of our challenge is, is, um, you know, working with RVR. Because they are, they, they maintain two public parks, um, you know, Orchard Park and Triangle Park are maintained by the RVR Home Association. And so they, so we've been slowly, you know, introducing the integrated weed management plan to them and letting them know that we, we want them to abide by it. Um, you know, they, they are willing to do that and they, and they, they have been working, working with us on that. So, um, they also, you know, you know, if, if they have an infestation of Canada thistle, you know, they're probably gonna use some chemicals. Um, but, uh, but they're, but they're, but they're aware of the, the alternatives and, and open to that, you know? Um, a lot of, you know, people who live in RVR would like to see them adapt that, um, those techniques too. So.
Well, I would move to approve the 2025 Integrated Weed Management Plan. Or you already moved?
No, I didn't move.
Go ahead.
Or do you want to say something?
I was just gonna.
We can still have a discussion.
I was just gonna thank Eric for all the work that he puts into this. I know that, eh, dealing with weeds is not easy. And we also have pretty high standards for how we want to do it. And I really appreciate all the work you put into it, the relationship with Bee Friendly. Um, and the folks out at Durango and the natural fertilizers and everything. And I'm pleased to see the goats are still in there. I can understand the budget, but I still, still think they have a great example. Rafta's a big, uh, user of the goats. So if we could time things with them, that'd be great. But, um, thanks so much.
Yeah, you bet. And so is the, the BLM of these goats up on Sudie too. I mean, so, you know, they're, they're, they're a good tool to have in our toolbox and we just, we just need to figure out how it's gonna work to use them. Yeah.
And I'll just add, I think one way to also help, uh, kind of what you were just talking about, kind of, uh, provide the knowledge that you guys have learned is maybe we can, you know, work on a, it'd be great to publicize some of these lessons learned. And whether that's just like a really easy, like, simple PDF of like, this is what we've seen work, um, this is the method, you know? Here's a link to the YouTube that tells you how to do this or whatever. I just, um, that could help. Something we provide those private, uh, landowners, whether it is HOAs or, um, just somebody with a really big yard who maybe usually applies chemicals, but might be interested in looking at something else. Um, because I do feel, I feel like you guys have a ton of experience in going through your spreadsheet and what you guys try, and then what you, maybe doesn't work and what you try again. Um, is A, I love that we have a really public record of it. And I think that's also good for your succession planning, for your crews and just knowing that, like, staff five years from now can reference kind of what worked back in the day or whatever. Um, and so I really appreciate this thoroughness, but, um, it also just feels like there's a lot to wade through for, um, our residents or somebody who might be interested. It'd be, I think, a really cool way to pat ourselves on the back and then share what you guys have learned, uh, with the public. Um, but nice job. And really kudos to your crew and to you for, um, just continuing to work through these problems. And like, we approved the use of some pretty gnarly herbicides last year, and then folks came up and brought you a new idea. And just the fact that you were open to it and you weren't like, nope, too bad, the town approved it. I don't really care. Um, that's, uh, makes you and your team just really willing to be innovative and, uh, respond to our community. So I really appreciate that.
Great, yeah. I, I, you know, in, in that regard, we just, you know, talking to my employees, they don't want that exposure to those chemicals.
Right.
You know, and so, you know, I'm like, why would I put them in that, that position too, if, if, uh, we don't have to? So.
All right, Chris, you can make your motion.
Um, yeah, I would move once again to approve the 2025 Integrated Weed Management Plan for the town of Carbondale.
Second.
All right, there's a motion by Chris, a second by Colin. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Uh, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And, and, uh, thanks for squeezing us in. I'm about, about a month and a half behind on presenting this to you this year, just with everything going on. So, um, uh, thank you, because we are implementing some of this, um, as we speak. So thank you.
Well, we know you're busy, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you, good.
All right, there's nothing else on our agenda, right? All right, then we adjourn, 7:24.
Right.
Wow, good job. What's that?
Apparently in five years.